Hello and welcome to the Revere City Council Meeting of August 19, 2019. Those members of the audience, would you please join the Revere City Council in a salute to our flag?
(inaudible) 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 Roll club the members, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morbeto.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novaselsky is absent, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo. Here, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo is absent. And Counsel President Guanasso.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of July 29, 2019.
Motion approved.
So ordered.
Calendar item number three, that the city council awards certificates of merit to Joseph Singer and his children Mia and Dominic and his niece Jana for their efforts to save a child from drowning at Sandy Beach in Winchester last September.
I ask the Singer family come forward, and also I ask Counselor Joanne McKenna to come up, as she is the maker of the motion. Counsel McKenna will make a brief presentation.
I don't know if it's great.
But I will read the certificate of merit as presented. "In acknowledgement of exemplary distinguished and meritorious actions, special recognition is hereby afforded to Mia Singer," I'm using one name in particular, and this is for the whole family, so we won't read it again. "On Saturday afternoon, September 1, 2018, you saved the life of a four-year-old boy at Sandy Beach in Winchester, Massachusetts, who had drowned. You quickly alerted your father that this young boy was underwater," excuse me, "and without hesitation, he pulled him from the lake and began performing CPR, which ultimately led to the boy's survival. Your actions that day will forever be remembered and witnessed whereof, the certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed upon by the mayor and the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 19th day of August in the year of our Lord 2019 and the Independence of the United States of America, the 243rd." It was signed by Counsel President Hata Guanasso, also signed by City Clerk Ashny Melnick, and also signed by the Honorable Mayor Brian M. Marigo, offered by Counselor Joanne McKenna. Counsel McKenna.
So I'm just gonna say, it's not brief, but I'm gonna just say what I feel in my heart. I just want you to know about Joe first. Joe Singer is an American hero, he really is. He won't tell you that because he's so humble.[252.01][252.01](applause) He really is humble, he doesn't want the praise, he doesn't want the credit. And it took me one year to get him up here to get this certificate. And he wanted the kids to be involved too, because the kids were involved. Just a little history about Joe. Right after 9/11, Joe was on the first wave to Afghanistan as a Marine. He did two tours. Joe was the first wave to Afghanistan, and the second tour he did as a sniper for the U.S. Embassy. He then came back to Revere and joined the Revere Police Department. So, he has three saves under his belt, and we're gonna talk about one tonight. He's a living angel, I believe. So, tonight I'm gonna speak about the event that happened September 1, 2018. Joe had the day off and he decided that he wanted to take the kids to the ocean, Revere Beach, to go swimming. Well, because of all the hype about the shocks, the kids didn't want to go to the ocean. So Joe decided, well, I'll take them to a lake. Instead of going to Breakheart, he goes to Winchester Sandy Pond, which he's never been there before. He's on the sand, the kids are in the water, and Mia stepped on a little boy that was submerged on the bottom of the lake. So, right away, the kids went, they ran a lengthy way to alert Joe, and first Joe's reaction was, "Stop kidding around." And they were so adamant, he said, "Okay." So he ran in the water, he saw the boy, and he pulled him out. He did CPR right away, and he was calling for help. Crazy enough, there was a cardiologist on that beach that day, and started taking over the CPR. Joe called the, someone called the EMTs, Joe assisted with the defibrillator, and they shocked the little boy, and they got the pulse going. When the kid was in the hospital, when the child was in the hospital, the doctor said that this didn't look good for the kid, because he was submerged so long under the water. But with God's help and everybody praying, the kid made a remarkable recovery, and he's running around, and he's 100 percent fine. So I just want to say thank you. I believe there's no coincidences in our lives. I believe we're supposed to be there when we're supposed to be there, and these four people right here were at a place and time where they were supposed to be, so let's...[433.12][433.12](applause) I just want to give you just a little more history. Joe was my student when I was at Revere High School, and, oh my God. But anyways, he has proven to be one of the finest people that I know, so thank you very much.
Thank you.[464.59][464.59](applause)
We're gonna take a picture now. You're welcome.
We'll hold one up, and you can take it for picture purposes. And Mia, you've been selected.
You can all hold it.
Count.
Can we have all the counselors up here, please? Zambudo.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Brian.
Brian. Chief, you wanna get up here?
Can you get in here? Get close to me, Charlie, get close to me.
Can you get everybody good? That's great. What a nice picture.
Hold a position until the Journal takes their picture.
Hold the chair. Take the chair.
Hold it like this, so it won't glare, so people can see. Dominic, put your hand on that.
Dominic Lloyd.
That's good.
Revere Journal, ready? We're ready.
Can you get it?
Wait a minute, the rest of them didn't get the, Jana?
Jana.
Jana.
Dominic.
Dominic.
And Officer Joseph Singer. All right, pick up. With us this evening in the audience is a very, very proud, great-great-grandmother, former Ward 1 city councilor Rita Singer, and she's gonna come up to the podium and take a picture with us and the family in two minutes, as soon as we can get her to stop posing. Rita, Counselor Singer. The whole family's coming up. Come on, Ward 1 Counselor.
Get all the kids, if you can get them all in. Get them in? Joanne, if you'll come up here.
Somebody get my phone.
All right, all right. Where's my other son? David? David, come on up. David, come on up, David, get in here. Don't take it.
All right, Journal, are we ready?
Say cheese. Cheese. Got it all? All right.
Wait, hold on, one more for the Journal. Good, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Good job, very, very nice.
Thank you.
Good, good. Put your hand up. That's it.
I gotta go to my grave. I tell ya, I can't believe it, that's why I came up here. I came up here with just a...
That's what you gotta do. Thank you, Rita. Counsel will have a two-minute recess. Back to the regular order of business. Calendar item number four. Prior to taking up calendar item number four, we're gonna offer out a suspension rule. All in favor of suspension of rules? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered. It's ordered to take up calendar item number 15.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the chief of police relative to the FY-19 JAG grant.
Chief Guido. Chief Guido.
Every year we come before the council in regards to federal grant, the JAG money from Burn, and we inform the council, and once again I'm here to inform the council, we put in $23,067. And we're gonna buy a motorized pedal bike, one for trial, one camera, we keep expanding the camera program wherever we can cobble money together, and supplies for Officer Salvati for all his community engagement work, and a couple of other little items. So I just came up if there was any questions.
There's no questions. Chief, I think it speaks for itself, you explained what you're gonna do with the funds. Thank you for the effort, and hopefully it helps to reduce crime within our community.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Thank you for your presentation. Placing a file.
Motion to go back to regular order of business, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number four, hearing call is ordered on the petition of National Grid to construct a line of underground electrical conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across Ridge Road in accordance with the plan on file.
Anyone here from National Grid? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Counsel, my name's Michael Cordima, National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street, Malden. This petition we file on behalf of the customer seeking new power for their home to cross Ridge Road. The access was to cross Ridge Road to get to the secondary cables that provide power up that dead end. Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak on behalf of this petition? Seeing none? Any opponents, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this particular petition? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
So, who live in the house? Where are they gonna...
State your name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Arroyev, 315 Ridge Road. Okay? So we just would like to know more about it, what are they gonna be doing?
Are you an opponent?
Just, we're here for the hearing, so...
You wanna speak in opposition? You wanna speak in opposition to?
No.
You don't want this to happen?
Point of information, he would like more information at being a neighbor.
Counsel, I didn't give you permission, wait, hold on, we're having a conversation. Because I understand there's potential problem with the neighborhood in reference to this particular petition, because we're working behind the scenes now, because my understanding is this has already been done. And so National Grid took it upon themselves to do this project without even seeking approval of this council. So that's the nature of what I'm talking about here, and there's a neighbor who's offended by this. Because what they did, if you're the neighbor, I'm not sure, they put the debris from the digging of the street onto this neighbor's lawn. Didn't even clean it up.
Okay.
So, I'm concerned with that. So I was, this was a process that I was seeing, proponents, opponents. Now, if you're the neighbor, the lawn's been disturbed by this, then I think you have serious rights for this. I think you have serious problems with this. Because they took it upon themselves to do this without approval of this council, which I really, and this council objects strongly too. I mean, what's the sense of having public hearings if they take it, they've done other things in our community that are very offensive to each and every one of us. So now they take this blatant event and turn it into a joke. And it's a serious matter for you people that were violated. So, I think it's your opportunity now here to hear from the petitioner, how are they gonna take care of your property, how are they gonna fix it up? Could you please come back to the podium and state this? And then after that, I open it up to city councils, but I just wanted to give you a briefing as to what's been taking place on this, and I wanted you to be aware of what's been happening. How do you...
Counselors...
First of all, explain why you did the work without getting approval.
These petitions, like this one and the others that I'm here for, the customer does the work. This was on my part, I wrote this job up like in March. I did all the background work, but I forgot to assign it to a petition hearing. I apologize for that. The customer did do the work without our approval in that respect, but it was on the customer. They always dig, they always do that work, they break sidewalks, they repair them, and in this case, they dug the street. I wasn't aware of the debris on the customer's property. I can call this man and tell him to clean it up if it hasn't been done, but he should have been told to do that.
Well, what I've been told, there's some pretty serious damage to this man's property, and he's entitled to some sort of cleanup or repairing to the nature of the way it was before you people did that work. And I just find it very strange that all this petition, all this work came down without any... Point of order. State your point, Counsel.
If he didn't petition the city, and then he himself, through his corporation, they're also liable for whatever damages.
They're, in this particular case, they're liable for everything. Counselor Keith.
The contract of...
Counselor Keith, that's for...
In the electric company.
Mr. President, obviously hearing about this a few weeks ago from Madam Clerk, I appreciate the honesty in coming forward to try to clarify this matter, but clearly it's not up to par, especially for the neighbors. I represent that area, as you know, and what I would, I'm not suggesting that this goes away, but what we can see happen, at the very minimum, outside of whatever fines you're gonna face or should face, is if you could schedule a meeting with the vendor that did the work, obviously without approval, yourself, the family members of the neighbors, if we could all go up there this week as soon as possible, I'll make myself readily available, and we get anything that needs to be buttoned up and cleaned up to the satisfaction of the neighborhood, take care of that first immediately. Secondly, we can take care of the council business and any sort of paperwork that needs to be done, and I would expect that any fines due would be paid before any other projects are approved. So I can make myself available as soon as tomorrow morning, the next morning, whatever time is good, we'll go up there, but the neighborhood should be taken care of. Obviously, you know that this work shouldn't have been done. I know that it was probably administrative issue, but the worst part of it all is it wasn't done well. And that's really the most disrespectful part of all. I don't care of an administrative violation, that to me, it's paperwork, it's shuffling paperwork. But when you upset the neighborhood and you don't complete the job properly, that's just complete ignorance. So, I'm offering myself up, and I'd be happy to schedule with the neighbors to make sure that that gets taken care of, because anything outside of that, it's just, it's just not respectful.
So the neighborhood gets a hold with Counselor Keith, and you get together, and they'll speak with this gentleman here, and they'll rectify the problem and get this done as quickly as possible. You wanna speak, sir?
Hi, I'm Jason Yurk, I'm one of the neighbors.
Your neighbor, your name and address for the record.
Jason Yurk, 315 Ridge Road. So for the record, the yard has been cleaned up.
It has been cleaned up?
It has been cleaned up, and grass has been put over, so I just wanna make sure...
Who did the cleanup?
I believe the contractor, but...
The contractor?
I believe so, I cannot tell you 100 percent, but it was cleaned up.
So it's restored to your satisfaction?
Correct. I believe the only remaining part is the street, it just has to be patched up properly, that's all.
So we'll get that patched up with Counselor Keith, and get the whole thing rectified. And again, I...
And the driveway, so...
And you get the driveway, whatever has to be done to get it done, get it fixed.
Thank you.
We have another individual wants to speak. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Santo Chia Pena, it's my children's home, who are doing the work there. We did repair naturally, their grass where it was torn up. They're great neighbors, they've been very patient. We're gonna also take care of their driveway that was torn up a little bit, and that'll take place as soon as, we're almost there. As soon as we get the front done with the landscaping and the sidewalks, then we're gonna clean up that street and naturally put hot top on it. So we didn't, we've been, done our due diligence, and we're trying. And it's a very difficult street, because there's so much going on for that house, they were constantly there doing stuff, and it's coming to the end, it's probably within the next three or four weeks.
We appreciate your appearance here. I would suggest and hope that you would work with Counselor Keith...
Absolutely.
And keep in touch with him, and obviously the homeowners who had the damage, so that this can work out nicely and make an ugly thing pretty.
Absolutely, and the great neighbors, and that's what we intend to do.
I appreciate your appearance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next calendar item.
What's your disposal?
Disposal is to place on file. We can vote on it, vote it up, it doesn't have to go to committee, unless Counselor Keith wants to keep it in committee until resolution of the entire project.
I don't think it's gonna stall any more action since the actual work was already done, but I'd hold it in committee just because, well, actually, I'd like to see your recommendation, Madam Clerk, just to see if this would help clarify your matters or...
My opinion is to vote it out, and you keep an eye on it, we can always call National Grid.
I'll circle back around, we'll follow up with the family.
Mr. President. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you. I think we can take Santo's word, I believe that they've already done some work, and they promised to make the neighbors whole, and I think everybody's in agreement, we don't wanna hold up the power any longer.
I think that's a good idea.
And try not to make any administrative mistakes anymore.
Okay.
Mr. Giardino.
If I will, yes.
Try not to make any more administrative mistakes.
To Mr. Counsel Rotundo.
To Santo. Is this the Dogg Graco home that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. These people, I have full faith that they'll fix this, so...
Okay.
They're people of their word, so don't worry.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number five, hearing called petition of National Grid to construct a line of underground electrical conduit, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across Rice Avenue in accordance with the plan on file.
Any proponents? State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mike Cordima, National Grid, 170 Medford Street, Malden. The customer, I think it's 215 Ridge Road, or the Rice Ave has built a new home, he wants to do a siphon service off a pole, an underground service, so he is responsible for breaking the sidewalk. He'll install his conduit to the pole and also do sidewalk repair. I believe he's talked to your city councilors about this.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other proponents? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay, Counsel.
This is the proponent side, are you a fan of this project?
I have to have my questions answered before I can make a decision whether I'm for or against.
Well, you can wait until after opponents have been heard, and then we'll hear that.
Sure.
Any opponents, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Any city councilors? Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is where a new house is being constructed, and I have every confidence that the fellow that's constructing the home will address this in an adequate way.
Okay.
I know what his concerns are, and I've spoken with him, and once again, I have every confidence that this will be done in a proper way.
Good, that's a good thing. Any other counselors wishing to speak? State your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue, thank you for allowing me the leisure of asking some questions about this project. When we're looking at underground conduits on Rice Ave, Rice Ave is located within a flood zone, and although we've been lucky down there, I do have some concerns about what happens if that area floods, so can you just speak to the protections that would be installed and how that would protect the residents so should a flood occur? I mean, we're talking about live conduits underground?
No, sir. One conduit.
It says underground electric conduits, plural.
That's just, that's just language that goes in all... What he's referring to is just language that goes into these petitions, this is just one three-inch conduit for residential service to come off a pole. It's nothing major.
Okay, through the chair.
It's underground, just comes off the pole into the house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think there's no reason that we can't vote on this this evening. Pleasure to the Counsel, Counselor Keith.
I apologize, I know this isn't my award, I just had a question in regards to this area, this is gonna be, are you gonna be polling underground conduits, or this is gonna be above ground?
He just explained that he's not going underground.
Okay, apologize, I was talking to the other constituents, thank you.
That's what I'm here for.
Appreciate the clarifying, thank you.
The wish of the president is that we vote on this this evening. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon per request of the Revere City Council to relocate existing pole number 1676 along with wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across Oak Island Street in Revere.
Prior to this meeting, I will have to step up and say something again on this. Work has already been completed at the request of the city council. The city council asked for this, so just to bring to memory, this is what we asked for, it's already been done, all we're doing is we're going through the formality of approving it. Member from National Grid just gave a brief presentation.
Mike Cordima, National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street, Malden. Yeah, we're just following up at the city council on this, getting the proper paperwork for this pole relocation.
Thank you, we appreciate that, since we requested, we're in favor of it, obviously. There's no need to delay it any further, we requested this, it's been completed, we appreciate it. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Pursuant to Rule 23 of the city council rules of order, the following motions or communications are being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number seven is a motion presented by counselors Keith and Guanasso relative to a short-term... to a short-term rental ordinance.
Madam Clerk, I don't want to see this go away. I want this to be, remain in committee with the hopes that we get an ordinance as soon as possible because we're inundated with these types of property coming up all over. Short-term rentals are invading our community, and people, our residents don't even realize it, how many are occurring on a daily basis. So we want to see this enacted upon these ordinances as soon as possible. Please remain in committee.
Calendar item number eight, an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to a nine-month moratorium on the granting of special permits for lodging and rooming houses.
This is an audit to place on file, and the 90-day period for the city council action is passing, cannot be voted on without ordering a new public hearing. So this is placed on file.
Calendar item number nine is a special permit request to install small cell wireless equipment on an existing National Grid wood utility pole at the intersection of 116 State Road and 4 Unity Ave.
Again, this is a 90-day period for the city council. Action has passed. All we can do now is place this on file.
Calendar item number 10 is a request of Bernard Schramm of 257 Washington Ave Realty Trust for the purpose of considering the discontinuance and abandonment of a certain portion of Lincoln Street as illustrated on the petitioner's plan.
This is going to remain in committee.
In committee. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Calendar item number 11 is a special permit request of mobility to install a small cell antenna and associated equipment on an existing utility pole on Pleasant Street near the intersection of Broadway.
Again, the 90-day period for the city council action has passed. There's no action to be taken by the city council. Place it on file.
Next up is the Appointments Subcommittee report.
Chairwoman, Counselor Janino. Do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do. So earlier this evening, prior to the council meeting, the Subcommittee on Appointments met. We had three items on our agenda this evening. The first was calendar item 19-141. This was a reappointment for Tufts Construction. He appeared before us, and this was taken up unanimously in favor. The next item was an appointment of Anthony Vares of Vane Street in Revere as a constable. This is a new appointment, and this was also taken up unanimously in favor. And the third is, it's considered a new appointment, but this gentleman had a permit with the city in the past. It lapsed due to no work in the city, and he's coming back. So it's a new appointment, but it's not his first time with a license in the city. For feral excavation out of Quincy as a licensed drain layer, this was also taken up unanimously in favor by the Subcommittee this evening. Mr. President, I ask that we take these all up together in favor.
There are no objections to take this all up as one. We're going to take them as one. All in favor? All opposed? All appointed?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 16. Communication from the Election Commissioner requesting approval of the warrant for the city preliminary on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019.
On the communication, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17. Communication from the mayor relative to the Coalition of Police AFL-CIO memorandum of agreement.
It shall the city council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the memorandum of agreement between Coalition of Police and AFL-CIO and the city of Revere. A roll call orders and...
On the motion, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 18. Communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Jeff Perlman to the Historical Commission and recommendation to nominate Mr. Perlman as the city of Revere's official historian.
Refer to Appointments Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 19. Motion presented by councilors Rizzo and McKenna that the mayor requests the DCR in conjunction with the city of Revere to place a plaque on the wall diagonally across from Kelly's Roast Beef dedicated to and in memory of the many women, the many men and women who use that wall as a source of healing and camaraderie following formal sobriety meetings.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Very briefly, this was at the request of a couple of people who used to assemble there, still assemble there after formal meetings to help beat their various addictions. And so that wall holds special meaning for these people. And from what I'm told, there are a lot of people who have assembled down there. So I think this would be a very appropriate reminder and encouragement to those who need it. So hopefully this is something the city council can approve and vote on favorably.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess this has been going on for 40 years. I didn't even know this existed, but it's called the sober wall. And after AA meetings, these people would go down and just gather and support one another. And they call it their sacred place. So with, you know, just a little plaque or something, just to say that this is the sober wall and for those people, they said thousands of people gathered there after AA meetings or they had AA meetings there, had coffee. So this would be great, just to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate my colleagues on the motion. It's a, it's a great motion. I dare say that the sober people that hang out at that wall would be there for the next 40 years, whether we put a plaque or not. But it is, it is a tradition, and I think it's nice to recognize it and maybe for the newcomers, they could get a little encouragement by it. So again, thank you. Good job.
Makes the wall more meaningful. It's ironic that today, I opened today's mail, and I got an invitation to attend this year's meeting. And so I certainly will be in attendance, as many of the councilors always are. And I think it's one that reflects, it's a great moment of reflection for people who have suffered such a thing. And I dare say, and it's kind of fool, you know, it's kind of crazy to think this, but there aren't very many families who have escaped this. It's, it's an unbelievable thing, whether it be alcoholism or addiction to some drugs. It's so, it's, it's, it's within our society, and it's a great thing that when we come together to, you know, just remember those who have passed, and hopefully those in the future will learn from that. And I think this, this little plaque that you want to put there, be more meaningful. I think it puts meaning to that. And for those observers who don't know what that is, it brings a little light to that spot, and I, and I think it's a great motion. I think, thank you. Counselor McKenna.
I was informed tonight by school committee man Fred Cenella that there are apostles down there, and they're numbered. So he said, he suggested it would go to Apostle Seven, which is across the street from Kelly's. But there are, the apostles are, I guess the apostles are numbered. So he asked if it would go to Seven so it wouldn't clutter up. I guess there is a couple of plaques down there, memorial plaques, so...
Well, there's a memorial plaque for an honorist's wife.
Grace.
Very aptly so.
And I forgot his name. He used to be a principal. His wife was killed down there.
Fox.
Maganello.
Fox.
Yes.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor? Counsel Powers, you want to say something?
Yes, I certainly, I think this is a, you know, a great idea on the part of the people, the councilors that submitted this motion. Again, I would just ask that, and there are many, not many, several plaques down there. And I think this is, once again, it's a great idea, and I think this should be put in an area where it will not, you know, overcome the other plaques that are down there. And it'd be a plaque that would be easily recognized by people going through there. And perhaps in an area that would, could be a gathering place for people who have addiction problems or alcohol problems. And I wholeheartedly recommend this. And I realize we're having that, I think it's the 17th is the...
15.
15, okay. That's the date for the memorial at the bandstand down there. This might be another area that could be used there at some point for that particular purpose. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. The next two motions, we're going to be very lucky. The Counselor Novoselski's, and he's asked that we vote on these. But you know what? We're not going to hear 20 minutes of, and I told him I would say this, and he said, you're not going to say that. I said, yeah, we're going to save 20 minutes of the taxpayers' dollars and, you know, boy, you're going to approve your motions. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 20. Motion presented by Counselor Novoselki that the mayor request the MBTA to clear the debris from the sides of the tracks of the Blue Line from Wonderland Station to the Revere Beach Parkway Bridge behind the Garfield School. Counselor Zambudo is recused from discussion on this motion.
Counsel Powers.
Mr. President.
Are you taking, are you taking Irish place?
No, I'd like to amend that motion. We have a, we had a motion in, and nothing has happened yet, to have them go down from the length of Arcadia Street all the way down on the east side of Arcadia Street and back there. It's all National Grid property, and it goes all the way down to the Eastern County ditch. And the people, they've been dumping stuff in there for a long time now, and it's about time they stood up and cleaned their property like any other citizen in this city does. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counsel. On the, state your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Thank you, Counsel Powers, for bringing that up. I actually have a ticket in with the city, ticket number 18306 about some of the dumping that's taking place back there. The other complaint is that the land is not level either, so it's now fostering pools for mosquitoes. So we're hoping to get all that cleaned up. Thank you.
And the motion as amended by Counsel Powers. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21. Motion presented by Counselor Novoselki that the mayor request the police chief to install a security camera on Walnut Ave on the pole at the dead end across from 255 Walnut Ave